Welcome to the November 12th Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on November 6th, 2012, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude from the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidential is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough in the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: A) The matters to be discussed are contracts for assistant superintendents and school business administrator, board secretary; and B) The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Shall we move? Only do a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before we start, let's have a roll call to open up the meeting. Thanks.
Ms. Bogaczewski? Ms. Santafonte?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Lawson?
Here.
And Mr. Kins?
Here.
We have quorum.
Yep.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Shall we move? Second.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extinctions. Okay, we're now in executive session. Thank you.
I dropped my off.
Okay, we're back from executive... Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely, Mr. Kins. Ms. Bogaczewski? Ms. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette? Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Mrs. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Kins?
Here.
Okay. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, moving on to the next item in our agenda, which is correspondence. We received the correspondences listed in this here in Attachment 2. And I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my pleasure to introduce our athletic director, Mr. Finisi, who will be sharing with us a spotlight on our athletes this evening. And I know that you have a special guest that you'd like to introduce. I'll let you introduce her.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Schiff, Dr. Antunes, Mr. Mahmood, Mr. Rocco, and public. This evening, Dr. Schiff has had a spotlight on students. And this particular time is for athletics. And I've had an independent study with Austin Athletic Department up to this point, Senior Kim Andreessen, and she'd like to present her project to showcase our athletic department, our students.
As Mr. Finisi said, my name is Kim Andreessen, and I'm doing an independent study on the athletic department and athletic director. I did the project on the athletic department and how the students use it, how many students are in it. I took a long time to find all the data, talking to coaches, taking pictures, asking Mr. Finisi and Ms. Malinka to look up stuff. So, my project.
Some nights I stay up casting in my bad luck. Some nights I call it a draw. Some nights I wish that my lips could build a castle. Some nights I wish they just fall off. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know anymore. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win. But I still wake up, I still see your ghost. Oh, Lord, I'm still not sure what I stand for. What do I stand for? What do I stand for? Most nights, I don't know. I saw this in my soul for this. Washed my hands with alcohol for this. I missed my mom and dad for this. When I see stars, I miss them. Stars, that's all they are. When I hear songs, they sound like the ones I'm coming for. Well, I'm sick of standing alone. I'm gonna send it away. Can you hear the distance of short, but it's hard? I try to hide my face like a fool. They come and get the jackass night. That's alright. I found a powder in my bed tonight. Stops my bones from wondering why, why, why. Eh, eh, oh my. Well, some nights I wish that this all would end. Cause after you some friends were changed. And some nights I'm scared you'll forget me again. But some nights I always win.[1686.31] When the township committee people, myself, members of the police force, OEM, and the township administrator sat to talk about this, we were actually concerned that that may disenfranchise more voters during a national election. And I suggested that we try to combine those polling places into the high school. And as a result, we changed a lot of voting locations to then go into the high school. The feedback that I've received, and I know that the township has received some similar feedback, is that under the circumstances, it worked. In fact, it worked to the extent that I have been asked by various members of the public to see if we could actually change it to the high school on a more permanent basis. Don't know if that's going to be the case, but it's something we're going to engage our township committee friends about, and have that conversation with them, as well as with the county board of elections. The other issue that came up as a result of losing days in school was an adjustment to the calendar that needed to be made. We lost five instructional days that past week. We made up three, a Wednesday, a Thursday, and Friday. Each of those were not days that were in the calendar to begin with. We had two snow days that were built into the calendar, meaning that as we begin our winter, we don't have any snow days built in, but we're not down days. For an example, my home district, Reddington, missed 10 days of school. They had three or four snow days built in, and they will be down days going into the winter. It's important at this point that we kind of understand the calendar, because we are going to need to make some decisions if we do have even a single snow day, that we'll have to begin looking into the idea of taking away days from spring break, which was what was indicated on the original calendar, but any other days as additional snow days, if needed, are taken. The other area that I wanted to share with the board, that the administrative team spoke about on Tuesday, and I just offered this to them, I asked the group, are there additional days within the calendars that we should be working differently in order to address the needs of our kids in this unique circumstance? We started talking about the parent-teacher conference days, and we took a look at those days, and those days are three for elementary, Friday of this week, Monday and Tuesday of the following week, and two days for middle school and high school, Monday and Tuesday of the following week. And I just posed the question to them, I asked them, what's in the best interest of the kids? And it seemed like there was consensus at that point, that was the best interest of the kids, was to get the kids to school. And as a result of that, I notified our board president, who notified the full board, that we would have some discussion about that. In the meantime, I asked our president of the HSA, just to get a sense from parents, how they're feeling about this, and I asked our principals to begin just touching base with teachers and see what their feelings are. Overwhelmingly, at the elementary level, both teachers and parents had the same feeling, that there was great value in those parent-teacher conferences, and that we shouldn't eliminate them at the elementary level. We had similar sentiment from ARIS. It was actually more mixed at the high school and middle school levels, in terms of both parent feedback, as well as teacher feedback. Now, we haven't surveyed formally our parent group to really get a good sense of how they feel. We haven't formally surveyed teachers. This has been done informally. But I share this with the board for you to consider. I'm not recommending that we make any changes at elementary through ARIS, but that the board does consider the possibility of pulling the kids in at middle and high school for the full days, Monday and Tuesday of next week, for your consideration. So with that, two things that I think we need to talk about a little bit at the dais. One is the possibility of going full days for middle school and high school on Monday and Tuesday of next week, knowing that there's a mix of opinion, and not fully understood what those opinions are from our parent group, or from teachers. And secondly, a brief conversation about kind of where we are in the calendar. And as we begin the conversation, I'll throw it up on the screen, so you all can take a look at the calendar.
Well, we'll open up the floor. So, as Dr. Schiff had mentioned, based on informal feedback, both from teachers and parents, the conferences for the elementary school levels, K through four, and then also at ARIS, five and six, will remain in place. And so the discussion that we're having is primarily focused on the middle school and the high school. So, as everybody knows, in those situations, you have, their schedules are much different than at the elementary level, multiple teachers, different courses, but the issues could be bigger, depending on the kids. So, I'd like to get feedback from, input from board members as to what their thoughts are on that. Mr. Posfer.
We were always in contact with teachers in terms of middle school and high school more directly than just conferences. As you say, with multiple teachers and a flowing schedule, it's very hard to do the traditional parent-teacher conferences like we did in the younger grades. So, I don't have a problem with losing those opportunities, because I think they can be dealt with otherwise. Additionally, I know that there are certain things on the calendar that are not under our control, things like AP tests, and the state-level tests, and things like that, where there's an expectation that we'll have covered a certain amount of material before we get to certain days on the calendar that are totally outside of our control. And the fact that we've lost so much time, while we may be able to play games with a schedule around snow days for the purpose of making up the 180 days, there are deadlines that don't move. And so, and those are the things that typically would have more of an impact on, for example, our high school students. So I think, from that perspective, that getting that time back for the high school students could be very advantageous.
Mrs. Swanson?
Sure. Since Tom's looking at me. I actually feel it's very important to maintain the conferences, especially this year, for my kids, new to both schools, the middle school and the high school. I think there's a lot of uncertainty among my peer group, in terms of parents. And, you know, in having initial discussions with some of my neighbors and friends, they felt it important that they have this opportunity early in the school year to consider with their teachers, the direction that their kids are going. That being said, I mean, I understand Chris's point as well about the AP courses. That would affect the high schoolers more so than, obviously, the middle school. But I don't know if that, if making a decision now to add days across spring break would be sufficient to meet those dates.
All right, I'll just...
For the AP courses, yeah, for the AP courses specifically.
Okay. I mean, from my perspective, I've got kids from the middle school level and lower. Communication between teachers and parents are improving, particularly with the student portal, where you can get instant access on how kids are performing, at least on tests, and a number of teachers are actually very good in putting commentary. To give a little flag, we got mid-year progress reports that were emailed to us. So from a communication perspective, there's, I think, stronger and more frequent communication in terms of how our kids are performing. I do think that the one-on-one is valuable, as is having the opportunity to establish, build, to have that face-to-face relationship between the parent and the teacher. So I'm torn, because we have lost a lot of days. It's, we need to make it back, and to be able to have full days where that opportunity to catch up or to enhance further, I think, has value. So it's a trade-off question. There's, and there's two questions. One is for this year, and then also for years going forward.
Right now, we haven't lost any days, if we...
Correct.
Great. So, you know, the question is whether or not we will have a bad winter, you know, so that, but right now, we're flush.
Well, even by staying in, though, we're not changing our dates. We're not gaining days by bringing, having the kids in full days.
That's correct.
So, it's not changing that part of the calendar, it's just whether or not we're going to maximize that day with instruction, or we're going to allow there to be feedback between the teachers and the parents. Like Tom, I'm torn, because my kids are older, so the expectation isn't that I'm going to go in and have a conference, but I've been in communication with my teachers, so I already know where my kids stand. But I do know the parents have taken the time off from work and scheduled this, and I think if they're expecting it, it's going to be difficult to change that. Now, I also don't know how many conferences we have at the middle school or the high school. I don't know if you need two days to do it, or if it was just being convenient to parents and schedules, or they could be accommodated in one day. I don't, I don't know how many it impacts, but I do know that the parents that have them planned would like to have them. So, I think it's hard at this point. If it's not impacting the calendar, even though it can academically help the grades, I don't know if we can ask the parents to give something up that they feel is a valuable communication.
Awesome. Go ahead, Chris.
Just two points. One, just so we can set the record straight in terms of what my perspective is, I have one student in college, and the other's a senior, so I'm looking at it from the tail end of the process, so certainly bear that in mind with what I, you know, the position I'm proposing. I would agree, Lorraine, that we haven't lost days against the 180, but we are two days behind where we would be, where we would expect to be right now, in terms of the number of days we have had in class. So with respect to the 180 days and snow days and all that, you're correct, we have not lost anything yet, but we are two days behind. And that's why I say, it really applies more to the dates that we can't change. Those dates come up, you know, early spring, mid-spring, that where we can adjust for the 180 days, or to meet the 180 days later in the year, but that doesn't help us in terms of the days in classroom towards those fixed days. So we haven't lost against the 180, but we are behind where we should be, calendar days versus days in the classroom right now. And that was my concern.
It may also be helpful, just for the board and the community, to see what we have in the calendar as vacation days, so we can see what, if we needed to take things away, where that would be, assuming we make it through December, which is a big assumption. We're looking at the 21st, which is Martin Luther King Day, the 18th of February, which is President's Day, five days for the spring break, and then Memorial Day. So there aren't a great deal of options as we move through the calendar. We have front-loaded our staff development days for the 5th, the 6th, and the 7th of November. Those have been canceled, and tentatively, I'm going to recommend that they become the last three days for staff, the 21st, the 24th, and the 25th, and that we will focus in on our new teacher evaluation model, the strong model, at that time.
With regard to the conferences, the parent-teacher conferences, there's also a logistical issue that we have to deal with. They've already been posted, the opportunity to sign up for conferences has already been set up with the student portal. I know that I've already set up some, my wife. So, there are people that have already signed up, so they have an expectation that they're going to be able to meet with their kids' teacher.
Right, and I ask principals to plan on just a normal parent-teacher conference, but that we would be discussing this tonight. It's up to you, who you would like to...
As a parent of a now-college graduate, I can say very honestly that every year I was very excited and enjoyed very much my teacher conferences. Back then, we didn't have a student information system, which is very valuable, but for the most part, it's numbers and a few comments, but it's not the same thing as a face-to-face with your kids' teacher. I think certainly at the elementary school level, where parents are very nervous, and, you know, looking forward to hearing directly from a teacher and being able to dialogue, I think it's critical. At the middle school level and the high school level, when you think that teachers may have 150 students apiece, I don't know how much time you, I don't remember how much time you get with your individual teachers, but I think that more than at the elementary level, you could possibly substitute with phone calls or emails at the time, you know, unless your kid's having trouble, when you should be making an appointment. I think conferences are really important. I also think that this has been a very extraordinary circumstance, to be down so many days, and there weren't that many days built into the calendar in the first place, and there were many, very few options once we get into March. I don't recall if Jordan mentioned this, but after the whole thing with the power was resolved, we had three to six inches of snow in Hillsborough. And I'd like to also shout out for the Public Works Department, because I looked out my window and saw four inches of snow in my backyard, and a black and dry road leading to my house. So while our Public Works Department does an excellent job every year, you know, we can't always rely on snow to happen at the right hours, so that they could clear it in time for our school buses. So, we do have a lot to consider here, and I don't think we can assume that we're going to get through the year without snow. So, we have right now only March 25th as a replacement day, with other days to be determined as needed. I don't know how long you want to go without determining as needed, because inevitably, I would think they will be needed. So, I think, you know, at the same time, people want conferences, and that's fine, but I also think we have to have a plan, because it's unlikely that we're going to get through the winter without any snow days whatsoever. And hopefully, we won't need them, but I think we need to have a plan, so that people's vacations aren't disturbed, and people's work-life isn't disturbed, when suddenly your kid's home and you're not. So, there's a lot to consider, and I would just ask for the public's indulgence, and I would ask for the public's input, because these are extraordinary circumstances this year.
I think that this is, what we're having right now is a discussion, we're not making decisions in terms of the calendar for which days. I mean, the calendar, as listed, as Mrs. Haas stated, is that if we do have any additional snow days between now and the end of winter, March 25th is what's designated right now. We will need to decide at the appropriate time which additional days, so do we start taking away from spring break, which also is the Passover and Easter holidays as well? Do we consider having school on President's Day, or on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and use those days as actually opportunities to celebrate that? These are the issues that we'll have to decide preferably sooner than later, so that we're not reacting, we can be proactive, and then also that we can communicate with staff, administrators, and more importantly, the parents and the public, as to, based on the weather that we encounter in the future, what the game plan is. I think, basically, from what I'm hearing from the board members with regard to the parent-teacher conferences, that we should keep them as they are. But I'm glad that we're having this discussion, I think it's a discussion that we should continue to have throughout the year, continue to solicit input from parents, from teachers, as to what the best way to have conferences, best time, and see if there's a better solution in the future years.
Thank you. May I make a suggestion that we refer some of this calendar discussion to the Operations Committee, and we have them come back to the full board with some recommendations, possibly beyond the 25th.
Actually, I would think that would be Education Committee?
Education.
Their meeting Thursday. Mrs. Haas? Yes?
At the last meeting, I had raised the possibility of whether or not we could make up days through technology. Has any research been done on that? Is that at all a possibility?
It's a possibility, but it would require a great deal of planning in order to put that into place. As I think I mentioned at the last meeting, after the H1N1 virus, there was a response from state DOE for all school districts in New Jersey to have a plan for some type of virtual education, given the possibility of extended out-of-district school closures, those type of things. We haven't heard anything about that from the DOE during this particular crisis. So, you know what, one thing is not just get the kids in, but we want to get them in, and make sure that the time is very well spent with them. So, we made a decision, as an administrative team, that if we had a choice of opening a part of the district and closing the part versus doing split sessions, the decision would be to keep open the schools that can be open, close the ones that couldn't be open, and make up those days with just those schools. And we see that currently being done in Bridgewater, and in other districts throughout New Jersey that have partial closures. There are other districts that are going on split schedules. So, everybody's kind of doing their own thing, and trying to navigate their difficulties the best way they can. Again, we're fortunate, we didn't have to implement any of those strategies, but we have them, we have them on the shelf. There's a couple of things, Mr. President, if I could...
Actually, if I can just...
Sure. I was going to talk about attendance rates for kids and stuff.
Actually, I was going to, let me have a little segue lead into that. I also want to reiterate the recognition and the thanks that Dr. Schiff gave. Dr. Schiff called me every day to give me an update on what was happening, so a shout-out to the engineering and facilities crew, in terms of getting the facilities up and running, the administrative staff, in terms of their flexibility and planning, and contingency planning, also to the teachers and the unit, and... and contingency planning, also to the, to the teachers and the unit, and Barbara Parker for their flexibility and wanting to get back into teaching kids when the NGA/EA conference was canceled, which allowed us to help catch up. And then the partnership also between the township and, and the school district, both in terms of helping getting the, the schools up and running, but then also with regard to the elections on the 6th.
Thank you, Tom. Our, our staff attendance was very good under these circumstances. As you can see up on the board, our totals for the district are 93% staff attendance on, on the Wednesday, the 7th, 90% on Thursday, and 87% on that Friday. And that also does not indicate all the filled areas, so we were able to staff with substitutes, those absences. The days were very well planned by the teachers. I had an opportunity to go to every school during the Monday and Tuesday timeframe, and so highly engaged, and the kids were leaning over, leaning forward, working really hard. I think the kids really wanted to be back, and, and the staff, from what I heard and what I exact, and what I saw with my own eyes, were, were right in the mode, and they worked as usual, and it was very, very well done. When we look at our kids' attendance rates for those days, this is September 7th, our total student attendance rate was 86%. Now, remember, this wasn't supposed to be a day for them. Many of them were taking vacation. So we had 86% on the Wednesday, 86% on Thursday, and 86% on the Friday, so it was almost flat. The kids that were on vacations or others stayed out, you know, those three days. But that was 86% of the children in this district that were educated when, when we were off those particular days. So my, my, my hat goes off to all of the teachers, especially those that changed their plans. And I heard stories of, of one teacher in particular who changed plans not to go to his sister's wedding in order to be here with kids. I mean, remarkable sacrifices that our teachers made for the children of this community. And, and I share that with you, because that was one example. There were many more examples. There are teachers that were in this district, teaching on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, that had no heat and no hot water at home, but came in to work with the children of this community. That's the type of district I'm proud to work in, and we should be very appreciative of our teaching staff and our administrative staff just the same way. They came in, changed plans. On that Monday and Tuesday, schools were closed. We've never had administrators in during an emergency closing like this. Our clerical staff also changed plans. That day, Monday and Tuesday, some of our staff could not get out of their house. I mean, literally, they were locked in their house because of trees falling in front of their homes and driveways, and every single one participated, either called in or was present for both of those days. Quite remarkable. That's the type of people that, that work in this district, and I'm, I'm very proud of that. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Moving, moving on with the agenda is the approval of the minutes. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes from October 22nd.
So moved.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. The, and now I'd like to entertain a motion for, to approve the regular meeting minutes from the October 22nd meeting as an attachment 4.2.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
One, one small correction?
What's that?
One small correction.
Yeah.
I realize it's kind of picky, but in the Committee Report for Human Resources Committee, the Strong Model, it should be capitalized, it's a proper name, so we should acknowledge that, capitalized.
Okay.
I have to contribute something tonight.
Yes. The other, there, one other aspect for the item... Here we go. For the random drug testing part, so it was item B5, it just lists that three members voted in favor, six mo, six members voted against. We need to have the names of who voted how, as we do in every other area, so we want to have that. And then there's a section here with regard to some, some parts that I said, and just clarification. So it was, I'll, I'll forward it on to...
Okay, we'll make that.
Any other, any other comments from the, from the minutes? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Moving on to education. Uh, let's see. Oh, we're in, school budget season begins. So as, as people know, currently, we are on the April schedule, in which board members go for election, and also the community votes to approve or reject the budget. So we begin the public confer, the public input sessions that we have listed, which we will have from here on through the completion of the budget, which is typically in the March-April timeframe. So we've got it listed here. So if anybody wants to provide public input on the 2013-14 school budget, please feel free to come up to the, to the podium. I think we caught people off-guard, so they'll be here next time. What's, moving on to new business, we have new business from the public. If you could please state your name and address, that would be great.
Good evening, Maria DeLucia, 122 South Triangle Road. I'm also an instructional assistant at the middle school. Dr. Schiff, Dr. Antunes, Mr. Rocco, Mr. Mahmood, and members of the board, on October 18th, I had the honor to stand with other educational support professionals from around the state at the New Jersey General Assembly for the ceremonial resolution honoring educational support professionals for the occasion of Educational Support Professionals Day, which will be held this Wednesday, November 14th, 2012. Our assembly recognized the importance of ESPs that, and I quote, "play an essential role and are invaluable partners in public education where they insist, assist in ensuring a safe and healthy learning environment is made available to students," and have consistently demonstrated their selfless commitment to the students of the school districts in which they serve. Hillsborough Township Schools could not succeed without these essential school personnel, our custodians, our maintenance workers, our secretaries and clerical staff, instructional assistants, bus drivers, lunch aids, and food service workers. I ask that you join our HEA President Barbara Parker, myself, and the New Jersey General Assembly in honoring these employees this Wednesday, November 14th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other new business from the public?
Hi, my name is Kenjul Dave, and I'm here as a part of my AP Government class for our Operation Civic Duty project, observing this meeting. I just had a question about the rescheduling for the days we lost during Hurricane Sandy. I was under the impression that half-days were counted the same as full days in the calendar.
That is correct.
That, that is correct. The, the discussion that we had with regard to the upcoming half-days or early dismissal days is, is, yes, so early dismissal days. It was, it wasn't so much about it counting towards the 180 days for the school year, it was more about can we provide better educational experience, teaching for the students during those time, during that time period? So that's, it's more about getting the, getting as much out of a day as possible as opposed to adding additional days. I get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Kelly Valano, 87 Meadowbrook Drive. I just have one question. In looking at the calendar and the recovery dates and teachers coming in, I do have one concern, that the November in-service days, and I'm speaking as a teacher now, not as the parent role, the November in-service days were supposed to be, I think, dedicated to curriculum and technology. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. So if those in-service days are moved to the end of the year, are, are they now being dedicated to teacher reform?
You bring up a very important point, because we did have the work on, on assisting, training, articulating on a new curriculum is very, very important to do. Plus, we have made changes in terms of different positions to help support our technology initiative as well. So there was time built into all three of those days to do those type of things. We also need time to, to do what is required by law in terms of implementing the new teacher evaluation model, and we have to do that prior to the beginning of next school year. I'm not sure that if we only have two days to do it in the beginning of September, that those will be enough. Pulling in those three days and pulling them at the end of the school year, and tasking our administrative team to say, well, how else can we do this? How else can we help teachers with the curriculum, knowing that we're not going to have those three days any longer this year, are things that we're literally talking about. We had a conversation about it this morning at our central staff meeting. And we'll be coming out more formally, Kelly, with all of the staff about what are our plans, how do we, how do we continue to make sure that the new curriculum is articulated well and understood well, and how we can move forward our technology initiative.
Okay. Because I really just wanted to make sure that the board knows that when we were given this opportunity to now have all this technology, and we were given the option of going to training in the summertime on our own time, there were some people who said, "I'm not going to do it in the summertime because I don't have childcare, or I have another job, or whatever that is, and I will do that training at the in-service days." And all of the training didn't, was not able to occur on the first two days before school. So they were really hoping to have that training in November. So now we're talking about not, I just want to be clear that we really don't have a plan for that at this point.
We're developing a plan for that.
Okay.
It, the, these are very unique times, and we, we can't forget that there was a hurricane that knocked out...
Oh, no, absolutely.
Weeks of, weeks of instruction for many districts. What we're going to try to do is to develop a, a plan that tries to address in as best a way we can the days that we lost. But we can't put in the in-service days now, we just don't have the time within the calendar. They have to come at the end of the school year. So I, you know, I hoped, you know, you plan, you try to put things together, but under these very extraordinary circumstances, the administrative team was not functioning on a level that we were thinking about how to make up those particular days during this past week. We were thinking about, how do we get kids into school?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I, I absolutely agree with that. But I, I think, just to make a point, and if I'm repeating myself, I do apologize, but the trickle-down effect of what, of what the teachers are expected to do, and we all do it, we do it, no matter what it takes. You know, the 100 required professional development hours are now out the window. The state does not require those anymore. So all of the hours that we have been doing have been on our own time, because we're dedicated to these students. It's just really disheartening as a parent and as a teacher to know both sides of the story right now, because as an experienced teacher, I'm going in there and I don't know my full curriculum. I was given it two days before school started, not by, for anyone's fault. It just is what it is, we ran out of time. And time is a huge factor, but I can't even sit with my colleagues and dissect this curriculum, because there is no time. And so eventually, I'm, I'm always going to do my best, but at some point, the kids, you know, something happens. It, do you understand what I'm saying? Does it make sense?
I, I hear and I understand your concern. Much of that would have been addressed if we had the three days within the calendar, and I can understand your, your concern and, and how you're troubled by it. We understand that, and we're going to try to put something together that will need to address that. It was literally on the, the first agenda item on our central staff after we got back to regular work week. So we, it's a high priority for administration, and we'll do it, we'll get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sylvia Skazari, 281 Otten Road. There's a couple of things that I'd want to, to bring up, and, and this does not really have anything to do with the days lost from the hurricane. These are things that have been happening since last year. On behalf of my colleagues here at Otten Road, some of the things that, to say that we're overwhelmed is to put it mildly. With, you know, PLCs and the tech trainings and the CST meetings, and our teachers are being pulled in so many directions that they're barely keeping their head above water. Not to say that the technology hasn't been great, it has been, and the tech trainers that we have in this district are outstanding. There hasn't been one time where I personally have not called on Debbie or Todd, where they did not make time for me, or the, our group, or, you know, no question is a dumb question, they are just awesome. And they do, they go above and beyond. But I feel as though, and again, on behalf of the people that I work with here, is we have a lot of things going on, we're keeping our head above water, but we're not doing anything great, because there's so many things that we're trying to do. The technology is coming around, it is not up and running everywhere you go. You can teach a third-period class and have everything go great. I go to teach a sixth-period class and it's not working. So I spend 15, 20 minutes of instructional time trying to get it working. People on carts, to get 15 or 20 kids on a cart, that takes 15 or 20 minutes. So, and I understand that some of this is growing pains, and, but we need, if we're going to do it, let's do it. And we need to really, really focus on getting it all up and going. The reason why I chose to spoke, speak to the board tonight is because you have the ability to make changes. You know, the administrators are taking directives, Dr. Schiff has directives, teachers have our directives. But the board needs to understand that we are not the Hillsborough that we were five or 10 years ago. Things have to change. I understand that, you know, years ago, we didn't want to give kids half-days for teacher in-service, because that would impede on, you know, what are the parents going to do with their kids? Yet, you as professionals, if you need training, what happens? During your day, in your business, you go out and get training. So I think the board needs to have a conversation on finding ways to get us training, because it's not happening the way it should. We are not being properly trained, it's not enough time. Pull us in for an hour or two, we don't know what we don't know, until we get in there and do it and use it. I'm still, you know, I have 25 kids behind me, I'm still using the whiteboard, and they know more than I do, and that shouldn't be. And it's not from lack of training, I went to the trainings, but I'm not proficient as I should be. And when I have 25 kids going, "Miss Skazari, you got to touch that, you know, the pen at the bottom." You know, it, thank God for that, because they helped me through it, but still. So one of the things that I would like the board to do is have a conversation on how we are going to get us trained. You know, our parents, we have teachers as parents who, their kids don't go to the school district. So our calendar's different from their calendar, but they seem to make it happen. They get childcare for their kids. All right? So it, it can happen. So again, to the board, please, go to work, look for creative ways to make it happen, and I know that you guys can do it. You know, I was talking to one of my colleagues, and I'll end with this. They said, you know, how do they expect, you can't get... They said, you know, how do they expect, you can't get filet mignon out of the cows if you don't treat them right. And I looked at her and I'm like, you know what? You're right. How do you expect us to do our jobs when we feel like, you know, we're drowning? And that's the way, that's, if you look around and not everybody can come up or feels comfortable enough to come up. So that's where I am. But if you look around and you really, really get into the schools and talk to the teachers, you're going to hear the same sentiment. And you know what? Board of Education members, come in anytime you want. Stop in. You don't have to wait for teacher of the day. Stop in. Go to the classroom, see what's going on. We want you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live in South Jersey, but basically spend my waking hours here in Hillsborough at the middle school. So I'm here on behalf of some of our middle school teachers. We got wind of this whole conference thing earlier last week and hearing that, you know, conferences might be changed or whatever, nothing ever came from us. We were, our opinions were never asked. So I took it upon myself as a building rep to do a survey of our staff to find out how they really felt about getting rid of conferences. And quite frankly, it was very evenly split, more or less. There were some very compelling reasons why we should have them as well as compelling reasons why we could get rid of them because there are some other alternatives now. So I just want to say again, I know you said that you're going to survey people, but I really think it is important that not only do you get the information from the parents and, you know, you as parents yourself on the board, but also ask the teachers. We're the ones being affected by the changes that you're making and we would like to have some input as to what works best for us and what doesn't. I would also like to suggest that when preparing the schedule for next year and we're looking at conferences again, if we do decide to eliminate conferences at the middle school level at least, I can't really speak for the high school because I don't know how their schedule works. But for the middle school, many of my colleagues said that they keep track of their kids throughout the year. They bring parents in during team planning times. It's much more productive to have a 40-minute face-to-face with parents of students who are struggling academically than try to squeeze in an eight-to-10-minute conference during the scheduled conference times. Also, it's suggested that maybe instead of doing the in-service, the 18 hours of in-service during the convention week, that we possibly do conferencing during the convention week on at least two of those days. And that makes it a little closer to November and not toward the end of the marking period. Those of us who are marking period teachers, honestly, we don't really ever have conferences because by the time the conference schedule, the marking period ends, I have my kids for one day, maybe two, and then conferences are scheduled. I have nothing to say about that child yet because I barely know who they are. So it would be more beneficial for marking period teachers as well if we keep conferences to move them earlier in November. I would also like to speak to the professional development days that are currently being tossed around for the end of the year. Another colleague of mine brought up the idea that maybe instead of doing professional days at the end of the year, we take the turnkey training sessions that have been offered all along, that currently offer no real incentive to any teachers aside from the fact that, yes, they're learning new things, but they're so overwhelmed with everything else they have that most people don't really have the time to come in before school or after school because they're already staying, coming in early or staying late to get their school stuff done. Maybe we can use those hours as hours toward those 18 hours that we missed during last week. So count those hours that people are coming in for the turnkey training, learning the stuff that they really need to know toward those end-of-the-year professional days. And keep the plan for next year the way it originally was with introducing the Strong Model Evaluation System for those first two days of school. That is just my suggestion. I appreciate you hearing me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Shelley Gamolka, 32 Joshua Drive. Speaking as a parent and I'd like to address the conferences and I urge you not to cancel them. I have high school students. I've always gone to those conferences. I intend to ask for conferences. The circle of people I know will. My children are not struggling by this time, though teachers have their strengths, their weaknesses. I frequent the portal. That does not take the place of sitting down, even if it's for 10 to 15 minutes, to talk to these teachers. I don't ask for conferences for all of them, but several of them. And, you know, looking that you possibly might, I'm still going to ask those teachers to conference. So in the high school, you're talking about they're missing four hours. One period's 50 minutes. So two times, maybe instructional time might be 40, 45 minutes each day by the time they get in and they leave. So an hour and a half per class for a high school student. In the scheme of 180 days, I don't think that's a lot of lost time. I think the value of conferences is important. I think it sends a message that parents are important. I know we are welcome. I do email teachers, but that's kind of a set time. It's always been that way. And I value that. The circle of friends I have will, you know, value it and we will ask. So we're going to ask teachers now to, someone said they're in the morning, they're afternoon, I'm going to request if they are canceled for a teacher, several of them and people I know, to, can I have that 15 minutes before or after? And they may be then interested in doing something else and hopefully they will honor the request. So how do you present that to the teachers if 25, 30 parents say they want? Will you instruct them to please be kind enough to take those days and those mornings? So anyway, that's, hope you will not cancel them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Kitty Ward, Hillsborough Elementary School. I'm the writing teacher. Just to kind of speak to the loss of professional development, which is what I think my colleagues are feeling, and of course, we didn't plan this hurricane and I know you all are feeling the same loss. A suggestion perhaps would be that, I think a big concern is people really still need to wrap their hands, not only around the technology, but around the curriculum. And waiting until the end of the year even to do that is a frightening thought for all of us. And so one, two suggestions would be that, I know we have to do PLCs and we have PLC goals and, you know, we have this whole structure for PLC, but maybe in these uncertain times, maybe this year we take our PLC time and utilize it for curriculum. Another suggestion, which won't come cheap, is that we have teachers in groups or teams meeting on half-days and bringing in subs to facilitate what's going on in the classroom to teach the children where the teachers can get together and wrap their hands around it. Neither thing comes cheap, but I think there is a concern that we're going to wait until the end of the year to try to get our hands wrapped around curriculum. So it's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing other people coming up for a new business. I'd like to solicit comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Okay. Seeing none, let's move to the action. The board comments for the action agenda, we'll take care of that during the action agenda. Committee reports, I believe we do not have any. We're meeting this week and next what the various committees are. Onto the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the section of education. Approval of professional development and related expenses. Approval of the HIB investigative list. Curriculum writing as listed. The disposal of the following textbooks. Approval of the following overnight trips. And approval of the following field trip destinations.
I'd like to entertain a motion to accept items A1 through, or approve items A1 through A6 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on this? There's just one observation that I noticed on the travel. There were a number of people going to the same conference and there was actually a pretty wide swing of reimbursement. I just want to know if there was a, there's just different modes of travel or? There was, this was for the leaning forward 2012. So there are some that were 438, some 639, and one for 939.
Sure. Because through that, one person put in for two people to get the AAA discount. So that person will be reimbursed.
I had a feeling that was the case.
So we were trying to be efficient.
Great. I had a feeling that was the case, just wanted to clarify.
Trying to save money?
Okay. Great. Any other discussion on any of those items? Mrs. Haas.
I know we discussed at our last meeting about textbook disposal procedures, but given the devastation, particularly in the shore areas of our town, of our state, there might be districts that can utilize some of these books even though they're not as new as they possibly should be. Is there some way to reach out and see whether or not they can make use of these books?
There actually is a way to do that. And there's a website that is not affiliated with the New Jersey Department of Ed that as schools need any kind of supplies, they can connect, they can put it on the website and that if people could get them, we just send them down there. So there is a way that we can do that.
Okay. Okay. No other discussion? Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I ask for the board's consideration for my recommendations under the area of human resources. First, to approve the resignation of Mr. Scott Rocco, our Assistant Superintendent, who will be leaving us at the close of the year, has spent 18, 19 years serving this district with distinction and I'm sure will be accepting this with a great deal of regret. Approve the revised appointments as listed. Revised leaves and long-term substitutes. Revised mentors and approves transfer and changes in assignments as well as contract changes. Recending of a contract and approves the leaves as listed. And approve the appointments of teachers, long-term subs, coaches, co-curricular advisors, substitutes, and approve student-teachers, homework, help center. And approve a motion for before-and-after-school media specialists extended hours.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B13 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Any discussion on?
Mr. Pulsifer?
I'm going to embarrass Scott because first of all, if I thought voting no would make a difference, I would. But I know we can't. I've had the pleasure of the opportunity of working with Scott since even before my first go-around on this board. So we've seen each other in a lot of different roles over, I think, 12 or 14 years. And it has always been a pleasure. Scott has always done amazing things in whatever role he was in and it's been an honor working with Scott and I wish you very well in your future endeavors. Thank you very much.
No other discussion? All right. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Oh, I actually have some-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I have some questions on the rest of the agenda.
Sorry.
I know, I'm sorry. And I would also like to add my comments to Chris and thanks Scott for everything he's done for the district. But now I have to just ask you two questions before you go. Two more torches before you go. I guess my question is on B12 and B13. We have here approval for a homework help center at the middle school.
Yes.
Are these the only grade levels in which we feel this is necessary?
These are the only grade levels that we approved last year and we're approving this year. They're where the greatest need is right now. These two buildings need, based on the enrollments and the level of instruction, we need them to be open. Is there a need at the other levels? Elementary has not requested it. Alton Road would like to have something, but I can work that out with them. But right now, these are the two levels we need.
Okay. And on item number 13, the before-and-after-school media specialist?
Yes.
We were heading in the direction of a goal regarding the libraries-
Correct.
And media centers.
Correct. And I will have something before I leave here for the board, for their consideration for the following year's budget. And that was always the intention of the goal, was to make sure that we had something to go forward for consideration for the 13, 14 school year. So there'll be recommendations out of that committee for what we would like to see the media centers at Alton Road Middle School and High School be like, including the staffing associated with that.
Right. I would also like to thank Judith Everett and Connie Swanzar for being willing to do this. This is a much longer day for them, but it's a very important service with high school kids.
And they did it last year also. And so did all the folks that are on the middle school list too.
They're good folks. So, thank you.
Bye.
As you can see, Mr. Rocco is continuing, he's going to finish on a high note. He is not easing back at all.
Nope.
Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations. To approve line item transfers, the M1 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan. Approval of the Somerset County Ed Services Commission Non-Public Service Agreement. The approval of the sale of retired Lenovo Android ThinkPads to computer kids for, computers for Kids of America in the amount of $5,500. And to approve the policy 0155. Board committees for a second reading.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C5 of the operation of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion? Think you want to separate out C3?
I have to separate out C3 to abstain.
Yep.
Ken, I have a question.
Yep.
We had discussed the androids during an education committee meeting and asked if they would be offered to the students who used them last year prior to sort of a group dispersal like this. Was any consideration given to that?
We did have a brief conversation, Lisa. Yeah, these were the, these were the tablets that were used last year for the fuse pilot at the middle level. Remember, that was the one that wasn't the iPads. So it was the only devices of their kind. Dr. Intunis, I remember having a brief conversation with Joel about, there were concerns and honestly, I just don't remember what those concerns were. We're actually happy that we had someone that was willing to purchase these machines for so we can recoup some of the monies that we spent on them. I apologize, I just don't remember specifically what the concern was. I do remember the conversation.
Right. Yeah, it's a screen, but you can't utilize them anymore for what we need. So what are we getting back for them compared to what we paid for them?
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, with-
Thank you. I knew that.
And there's, there was 30 or so of them. We'd have to take a look at the backup and compute exactly what that is. Once you purchase one of these items, the sales, the resale price goes way, way down.
Even faster than your car does.
Right. And I know that there's a process that when a, when a school district is disposing of materials, that it has to go through a bidding process. I don't know from a process perspective if the-
If we could have done it, that may have been the issue.
If the prior students were notified and told that they could bid, except it would have been for the entire lot.
I would just ask that in the future, if these things happen again, that we offer them to the parents first. I mean, we're getting $100 per unit here for something that we paid, I think, 300 or 400, I think it was. So, you know, if it is going to make some students' lives easier, it could be that they don't have a computer at home, but this would give them access to the internet. It might just be something that would improve the students' ability to learn and do homework at home.
I think it's more of a procedural problem. The issue comes back to being purchased with public monies and therefore what do we have to do? And there's laws around how we have to proceed with that. So it's not as simple as saying, if we're only going to get 100, then we can get 100 from whoever. There is a process that we have to follow. So it's more of the binding rules in that area that are going to be a problem for us.
I'll follow up with you on the details of the reasoning behind it.
All right. So we'll take a, any other discussion for, okay, so we'll take a roll call for items C1, C2. C1, C2, C4, and C5? Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, motion passes. Now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item C3 of the action agenda.
So moved.
One second. Okay, thank you. Any discussion? No. Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Mahmud.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Abstain.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kinz?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay. Now we'll move on to public comments for old business. Okay, seeing none?
Tom, am I allowed to make one plug for something? It was really a new business, I think.
Sure. Please do.
There's a lot of good things going on in the school, but I wanted to let you know that right now, 50 kids are at the high school practicing and are quickly trying to finish up the play, The Christmas Carol, to put on this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. They just finished building the set. Their costumes haven't come, but yet there are kids from the age of five all the way to 18 at the high school tonight practicing in hopes of putting on a great show for the community. So, someone is at the school tonight, tomorrow, and Wednesday. If you'd like to buy tickets, there's information also with the agenda that came in. But it was a great opportunity and it was nice to see so many kids. There's 50 kids in the production this year. So I think it's one of the biggest productions that they've tried to put off. And Sandy didn't help them either this week. But they're really excited. So I just wanted to put a plug in for the show.
Thank you, Mrs. Santafante. Any board discussion on old business? No? Oh, and Mrs. Haas?
Sorry. Don't mean to belabor this, but just because so many teachers came up to the podium to talk about how they want to do better in their jobs, right before the hurricane, we were, a couple of us were down in Atlantic City for the School Board Association Conference. And one of the classes I went to was about supporting Common Core standards and educational evaluation systems with quality professional development. And it was a very enthusiastic, very exciting class, actually. And all of the presenters were talking about the value of professional development and even provided like an international statistic of how United States teachers spend 80% of their working time engaged in instruction as compared to about 60% for other nations, and that other nations invest heavily in professional learning and build time in for sustained teacher development and collaboration. And after listening to this for an hour and a half, every school board member who was there from all over the state raised their hand almost unilaterally to ask the same question of the presenter, and it was, "When do you find the time to do it?" And it was like, the first person asked it and everybody else in the room laughed because that seems to be a universal problem. It's not just us. And another class that I went to about the park, which stands for, which actually Lisa and I went to so that I had somebody in the room as a witness. This is the Partnership for Assessment for Readiness for College and Careers. And the great takeaway from that is that, and this was presented by New Jersey Department of Education people, and the great takeaway was, this has to be implemented 2014 to 15, but when you ask any question, when you ask for money, when you ask for help, it's not there. None of this stuff has been figured out yet. So we have another, you know, state initiative, great idea, terrific. I mean, we want all of our kids' career and college ready, no doubt about it. But people from the highest levels of the Department of Education weren't quite clear at this point, which is really not that far away from 2014 and 15, still didn't have an idea of how we were gonna get from here to there. So, it's just very interesting going to these conferences because some of the learnings that you're intended to get are not the ones that are the strongest takeaways. But it was a very good conference, probably the last one you're gonna see in Atlantic City for a while, unfortunately. And I also got to see our former colleague, John Donadio, who was a panel member in a panel of speakers of government relations. And it was good to see him again. So, be that all as it may. The problems that we have here are not different from problems that exist in other districts. And when you get to see what other districts are doing, it's very complimentary to Hillsborough because we seem to be ahead of a lot of the things that are going on in the state. And as troubled as you may feel about all of these initiatives, we are doing really well in this district. And, you know, I really appreciate the fact that even with that, you people want to do better. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.